I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for February 18th, 2020. Invite you to stand if you choose while Commissioner Perigin leads us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, please watch over us and give us guidance and wisdom as we come together for the betterment of our great community. Be with us and keep be with and keep safe our law enforcement and military personnel as they work for our safety. Pray for our nation. It's in your name. Amen. I'd like to ask Chloe Milliken to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance as a representative of this great group of Bowling Green High folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chloe.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Thank you very much. We have several awards and recognitions tonight. I'll take one point of personal privilege first before we get the big crowd up here. Dr. Eli Jackson is here with us tonight and he has done a program in our community to help those who have difficulty with their struggles with dental problems and providing those that have difficulty paying for the dental issues. This Friday from 7:00 to 4:00, it's called Smiles for the Heart. Dr. Jackson, thank you for your helping in our community and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, sir. So, we've got a big crowd here tonight and I think Bowling Green High is going to be represented by Warren County Attorney Amy Milliken. Ms. Amy.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having all of these cheerleaders here. They'll bring some pep to your meeting today. It is my pleasure to introduce them and I'm going to let them come up and stand behind me when I, while I tell you about their big awards. So, if you girls want to come on up. And as they walk up, I'll tell you just a little bit about these girls who work tremendously hard all year long. And if some of you want to fill in there and kind of go around, yep.
Have to form two lines, as many of them as you are.
First, I want to tell you cheerleading is absolutely a sport. It may not have been a sport back in the 80s when I did it, but it is absolutely a sport today. You should see these girls tumble across the floor. You should see them stunt the way they do. What they give to this program every day, their heart and soul really showed on the mat. So, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about their competition. Each year cheerleaders from across the world look forward to the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship. It's always held every year at Disney World in Orlando, Florida. It's televised on ESPN and Varsity TV. In 2020, almost 20,000 athletes competed in this competition. 950 teams, 34 states, and nine countries were represented. You are looking at the game day champions, national champions of the world, right here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. In the early 80s, they always gave out medals and trophies, but in the early 80s, this satin white jacket became the iconic symbol of cheerleading champions. And so, these girls have these white iconic jackets and they are so excited about it because in the history of Bowling Green High School, no team has ever won the national championship until these girls. And I have to tell you, it is because of their leadership. Bobby Dotson, who is their coach, O'Shea Parker, Paula Adams, Ben Line. But Bobby Dotson is the heart and soul of this program. She spends, yes. I will tell you that there's a lot of heart and soul behind me too because the parents and the brothers and sisters who have to tag along to all of this stuff, they are certainly supportive of these girls as well. So, the girls should give their parents a big round of applause, I think. Okay, so I want to introduce these girls to you and then I'll stop talking, but I am so proud of them. I have, I may have overshared on social media, but I am super, super proud of their hard work. So, we have our seniors. We have Katie Tibbs, who's a five-year senior. She's shared for five years on the varsity team. Chloe Milliken, may sound familiar. Devon Bell, Miracle Reed, Eden Coleman. Those are our seniors that are graduating, which breaks my heart and breaks Bobby's heart, too. Our junior, Rachel Counts. And we had, we had one of our girls break their foot very last minute and we had Bug Matthews step in for her. Thank you, Bug, who couldn't be here today. Taya Kirk, Jamison Tally, our sophomores, Alaina Hinson, Claysey Edmonds, Michaela Harper, our freshmen. We have freshmen, so Bobby has lots to build on. Grace Taylor, Addison Dillon, Jordan Carruthers, and Winter Hampton. These, my friends, are your 2020 Game Day National Champions.
Nobody gets to wear that big emblem there if they have to work.
That's right.
Congratulations, teacher. Thank you for coming down. You can have, this will be on YouTube starting tomorrow and you can come back and look at it any time. It's a show your kids and grandkids.
That's right.
Congratulations to you.
Great to be a part of it.
That's right.
I'm sorry, but any of the parents like to get a picture with the five of us behind them?
Yes, and I'll get out of their way.
Sorry, I didn't forget to do that part. Come on over, Jill.
We hope this will not hurt in the future, Winnie.
They asked me to. I'm on the payroll. Make you feel like movie stars and keep clicking.
One more.
Ready, start. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you, girls, for coming down. Any of the family members are welcome to slip out during this time. Don't feel obligated to stay around. Let us bore you to death up here. So, I think we have another announcement to make and I'll invite Lieutenant Colonel Penny Bowles to step up to the microphone and provide us some good news that may already be out, but give you that official opportunity here.
Sir, Commissioner, Mayor, City Manager, thank you all for letting me speak and share with the excitement. It's been on social media and a news story, but last Thursday, the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council in Louisville, Kentucky approved our petition to host our own law enforcement academy here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. So, a process we have been working on since the fall of 2017 came a reality on Thursday, February 6th. So, we're very excited. The two recruits that you all approved last commission meeting will be in the first BGLEA class, which is scheduled to start June 15th, and they'll be graduating in November. So, just wanted to say thank you for your support. The mayor, city manager, and Chief of Police, and Jean Harmon, all made the trip to Louisville to support our endeavor and that was really, it spoke highly of the support that we have on your all's behalf. So, thank you very much for supporting us and we look forward to having the academy here.
Make sure everybody understands how special this was. The only three academies out there, the Kentucky State Police, Louisville Metro, and Lexington Urban County Government, all of whom were existing prior to the establishment of the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council. So, this is the very first one that they have approved from a new basic training academy standpoint. So, we're very excited.
Sir, that is correct. It's very exciting.
Good job.
Thank you.
Really good job. Sue, you're up.
Okay, we're going to talk census again. First thing I want to do is thank a few people and we got these shirts hot off the presses and anybody wants one, I think Hope brought a few extras up here. But we want to thank Fruit of the Loom for providing the shirts, Gerald's Printing for doing the screen printing for us. Of course, we want to thank the City of Bowling Green and the County of Warren for allowing us to have this committee and for giving us some resources to talk census. Census is coming. You're going to start here in a couple of weeks getting an invite in your mailbox to go online and take the census. And so, just go ahead and do that. I will say this, that as of last week, we have an official, can I say? An official competition with Owensboro, Kentucky Mayor and our mayor, Mayor Wilkerson. And so, we're going to have a competition between now and the end of April on self-reporting. So, that means that you're going to get online and fill out that census. It's really simple. It's going to take you a few minutes. If the form comes in the mail, go ahead and fill it out because this is a really friendly competition, but it's a competition. And we intend to have Old Hickory, I think it is, barbecue.
Hickory Barbecue.
Old Hickory Barbecue coming bulk here with some sides and enjoy that as a commission. So, yeah.
And they haven't even told us what they want from us should we lose because I don't think they expect us to, I mean, they expect us to win, so.
Yeah, they do. And I expect us to win. So, I'm asking the general public that's out there, the folks in this room, spread it amongst your departments. Go ahead. We only have till the end of April. Whenever you get the word that you can go ahead and fill that out. This is all about self-reporting, so it's not going to be to the end of the census. And remember, just the census is such a powerful tool for us to receive funding from the federal government. It represents $1,000 per individual that is counting per year, so $10,000 during the census period per person. Okay? That's what we'll, that's what we stand to receive. So, we stand to lose that if you're not counted. So, get counted. Thank you.
And next, we have Operation Pride Awards. Khalil, you're up with us tonight. You're going to bring William with you as well, huh? I thought you told me last time that was your last time.
No, I just keep coming back. Really, I'm just here for moral support and to introduce Khalil. So, this is Khalil Garman. He's a Business Administration student at WKU and he's taken on the internship with Operation Pride. So, you'll be seeing his face for the rest of the year. So, congrats to you.
Thank you.
But yeah, I'm done.
Like you said, first off, thanks. Thank you all for having me. I'm happy to be here. My name's Khalil Garman and I'm pretty much the new William, new and improved for Operation Pride. So, yeah, Operation Pride, every month, we give an award for commercial and residents. And this month, we're doing a commercial award to honor a business that does renovation that makes their business look better to make Bowling Green look better. So, this month, we're honoring Gary Force Truck Center, Tim Canaly, right? Tim Canaly? And this PowerPoint pretty much is just showing the before and after pics of inside and outside of their property, the renovations they did, and how they made it look better. So, here we go. This is the before pictures of the outside of the property. And bang, beautiful. It's after. And this is the inside before. And this is after. So, that's pretty much it. We want to keep doing this every month. It's good that we honor these companies and people because it's good to make Bowling Green look better. If you know any businesses or residents that have made a big contribution or made bigger renovations, please email me or call me so we can keep honoring these people and keep congratulating people for making Bowling Green look better. So, here's a cool award. Here we go. I can see. Cool plaque. There you go. And thank you.
Thank you, buddy. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Canaly?
I promised Mayor Wilkerson I'd keep it under 30 minutes. So, on behalf of our 94 employees here in Bowling Green, Mr. Force and I would like to thank you all and we look forward to doing some more good work in the future. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your investment here and employees and in the business as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, no, no. It's good to see you all again. You all look good.
We'll see you next month.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Khalil, you're a lot nicer than the former guy that was during.
I never heard of him.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Are there any other awards and recognitions tonight? All right. Approval amendments from our regular meeting on February 4th, 2020.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Beasley Brown. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2020, number 18.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Leslie Swafford to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
Moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Maslow?
We have an opportunity to get a dispatcher in-house and I'd like to ask Aaron Holsey to come up and make a recommendation for appointment.
Good afternoon. So, we do have four vacancies within our dispatch department. So, going back to almost a year ago, we started accepting applications for Communications Dispatcher and we did some interviews last July. Of those interviews, we found five individuals that we selected to hire, but we have staggered their start dates to make sure that they have a really good training experience. So, I would like to introduce and recommend Leslie Swafford, if you'd like to stand. Leslie is a graduate of Grayson County High School and she just completed her bachelor degree in criminal justice from Kentucky Wesleyan College. She was attending there with both an academic and an athletic scholarship. She has some more information on her work history in the memo and her application and I'm available if you have any questions.
Come answer your questions. Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. Municipal Order 2020, number 19.
Municipal Order authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Transportation Alternative Program, TAP funds, in the amount of $846,480.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
I believe we brought this project to you some months back. This is a TAP grant that we have now been awarded in the amount of $846,480. There is no match required to it. And what it's going to do is replace 5,000 square feet of sidewalk area along rightways of state highways coming into the city, 1,600 linear feet of sidewalk slab of rehab along with that, making everything ADA accessible, removing trip hazards, and just improving overall walkability in our area. Upon completion of the projects, the sidewalks located in the state rightway within the city limits will be our responsibility to maintain through a maintenance and traffic agreement with the state. Greg can answer questions on that, but I will point you to the maps in your packet. The first map is just the overall citywide area where these projects are going to occur. And then the pages following, the first one is kind of a drill-in to the bypass downtown area. The red dots denote that it's a repair. All the yellow is where they're going to have to cut and replace, I think. Next page is your Campbell Lane, Nashville Road, Russell Road area. The red dots, again, are where they're going to repair sidewalks. Yellow is replace. Next map is your Lover's Lane, Scottsville Road area. Same legend with the red and the yellow there. And then the final page is the Scottsville Road from I-65 all the way out to I-165. There will be some work done along that stretch of road with the sidewalks. Also in your packet is the agreement with the state. Nick worked on this a lot with getting this grant. I'd like to thank him for all of his work. And Greg has been involved with, Greg Meredith involved with all the consultation and correspondence with the state with this project as well. So, he's here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Come answer your questions.
Nick, you hadn't heard about the half a million dollar pay raise you're going to get? You haven't heard anything about it?
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2020, number 20.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholding's credit agreement with ProBuild Kentucky LLC, ProBuild Company LLC doing business as builders' first source.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning.
Going to hand this one off to Katie Schaller Ward, acting as our Job Development Incentive Program Manager. That's another hat she wears.
We actually, the Job Development Incentive Program Committee, heard about this particular project back in November of 2016. And that's when they applied to the state to get our Kentucky Business Investment Program consideration. And so, they're now finally going to go final with the state. So, we needed to have approval by our Board of Commissioners that authorized our incentive match. And so, in order to match to the KBI application, the city matches the 3% the state provides with a 1% return on their occupational fee that they pay to the City of Bowling Green as a credit. And so, it's creating 79 new jobs and offering, with the 1%, they'll be able to retain about $249,000. And the city will have about $212,000 over that 10-year period. And after that, they'll go back to being the full 1.85% pay into our occupational fees.
Come answer your questions. Under the public, we don't give the money to them. They bring the employees. When we withhold it based on their employees, then we can rebate part of that back to them.
And only when they achieve the standard that's set.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2020, 21.
Municipal Order authorizing the Housing Authority of Bowling Green to retain the city's portion of the payment in lieu of taxes pilot for the 2019 tax year in the total amount of $24,591.14.
I'm moved.
A Perigin, second by Nash. This is an annual program where we return funds in the same fashion, but it's used at the Housing Authority for their after-school program. Katie Miller is here. Do you have any comments to add tonight? Not a thing. Appreciate you guys being here. Any other comments or questions?
You sure we don't need to ask her anything?
Just to get her up on camera, maybe?
We okay.
Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2020, number 22.
Municipal Order authorizing the creation of a bank account at PNC Bank for Transit Program Funds.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
In our financial policies and procedures manual, we have a requirement that we bring any new bank account creation to you all. And tonight, we are bringing one to you. Katie's going to explain the reason, but this is for our transit program that we are underway with. So, Katie, you want to explain the purpose of this bank account?
We recently had a triennial review of our transit program and one of the items that came about is consideration that our federal funds be kept in a separate account. Currently, all of our transit program funds are all part of our main bank account, although we keep and track all of it separately in our accounting system. Right now, all of those program funds are deposited in our main account. So, what we're recommending is that we separate those federal grant funds along with any funds that the city provides to the transit program and any other funds that the transit program creates would then go into a new bank account. And we are recommending PNC Bank to hold this account because it is also the bank that holds our federal funds for our housing choice voucher program as well as our community development grant fund program. And so, it would make things easier for neighborhood and community services to access through one login those accounts in order to review them, make sure that fund draws are being done correctly, deposits are being incorporated, and we can also track those deposits and those withdrawals independently of the other accounts so that we can track all those specifically for this one program. And it's a lot easier to do that utilizing the same bank in order to have those services. So, and you know, we're going through the process. I think an RFP is going out tomorrow to, for our transit program. And so, we wanted to go ahead and get a jumpstart on establishing a new bank account. So, we'll have to contact the state, sorry. We'll have to contact the Transit Program Federal Funding Agency, get all of our paperwork set up with them so they know where to make the deposits. But if you have any specific questions about that program, obviously Brent Childers can also help with some questions. But that's the basis behind this request.
Questions? Dr. Butler, I noticed you're here in the back of the room. Do you have any comments or questions for us?
No.
Thank you for being here. Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2020, number four.
Ordinance rescinding interlocal cooperation agreement relating to the historic railroad depot. Ordinance rescinding interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Warren County related to the historic railroad depot located at 401 Kentucky Street.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning.
At a recent meeting, we, you all approved the deed over to, of the depot property that was jointly held with the county to the Downtown Economic Development Authority. So, this is a recension of the interlocal agreement that was done back in 2001, I think, when we were together with the county working on the rehab of the depot. And so, with the transfer of the deed, there is no longer the need for the City-County Depot Committee, which followed a depot development authority back in the day. So, this is to dissolve the Warren County, or the City-County Depot Committee that has been overseeing that property for a number of years now. Jean, do you have anything to add?
Come answer your questions. Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2020, number two.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020.
I'm moved.
Second.
Perigin, second. Other comments? This is the second reading of the ordinance. Any other additional information? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Next, we have a discussion related to our meeting procedures. I think we had discussed and tabled the original motion. And in the meantime, I think Mr. Harmon and Mr. Maslow have been working on options for us to consider.
Okay. Jean, Katie, Ashley, and myself, we have met last week or week before, following up from the last meeting, to discuss the options that we could come up with in regard to voting on the first reading or not. Jean has put together some information that kind of gives you some background, basic information of what an ordinance is versus a municipal order. Both are defined in KRS, Chapter 83. Ordinance being an official action of a city legislative body, which is a regulation of a general and permanent nature and enforceable as a local law or as an appropriation of money. The municipal order is an official act of the city legislative body, which is binding upon the officers and employees of the city and any governmental agency over which the governmental agency has jurisdiction. Municipal orders generally deal with internal operations of the city, including approval of policies and procedures. So, we have that before you in your package. So we have that before you in your packet just to kind of give the distinguish between the two of them. There are no legal requirements for work sessions that we've found under KRS. That is also in Jean's memo. And in your packet is also, towards the end, is the existing Board of Commissioners' meeting procedures that are found in Chapter 2, starting in Section 2.12, going through Section 2.23. We have provided that to you. And so what we've come up with is, we feel like there are three options. And let me go through those, and then I'll let you all discuss and open all this up for what you all want to talk about. First option is, we came up with is basically, we'll keep everything as is, and we can work on scheduling work sessions ahead of time or during my comment section at the request of one of you all, Board of Commissioners. Second option, option two, would be to do away with the vote on first reading, but have all discussion during the first reading to save from having separate work sessions. And then the third option is sort of a hybrid option, and we have a proposed amendment in your packets regarding this one. And that is to change the abstention language found in Chapter 2, Section 2.19, that would allow a, more or less a pass, not to vote on first reading if the BOC member chooses. The draft language is found in your packet that would be between what we gave you on your memo. It's Section 2.19. And basically says, "A commissioner may pass on the roll call vote on the first reading of ordinances rather than emergency ordinances without the requirement to disclose any reasoning to the remaining commissioners and to the public. In such a situation, the commissioner may remain in the room and participate in all discussions regarding that ordinance." So I'm going to let Jean, Jean, do you have anything to add to your research that you found?
No.
So that's kind of where we're at, where we think we're at, to kind of put some parameters around this thing and give you all some structure to vote on, so.
Let's discuss number three, the pass. Now, what are we going to do on the first reading? It's going to be an introduction at the first meeting and discussion of that particular ordinance.
Yes, sir.
No vote, and the word "pass" has got to come up.
You could still call roll for a vote, but you would have the option to pass and not vote is basically what we would be allowing in the language.
As individuals.
We kind of looked at the meeting procedures and thought perhaps that over time, we've changed these procedures quite a few times over the years, we thought perhaps, particularly on the first reading, that maybe that language was too strict with the abstention, you know, we have to abstain, you have to leave the room, you can't participate. So we thought if the idea was to still keep the first reading on the, on all ordinances, but a commissioner may not be prepared to want to vote on the first reading, that we'd come in and say that, well, if you want to on the first reading, as long as you didn't have a conflict, if you got conflict, you still have to do the abstention. But otherwise, if you didn't want to vote on it, you could just pass on it, which means you could still stay in the room, you could still participate in the discussion, ask questions, do whatever we want to do. But we are eliminating the requirement on first reading of ordinances that you have to actually vote on it. The commissioner will still vote on it, but each individual member will have the ability just to say "pass" instead of "yes" or "no."
If there is not a conflict of interest.
Yes. If you have a conflict or any of the other abstention language, we didn't change any abstention language at all. If you have a conflict or for some reason that you think you can't fairly judge an item, then you still need to abstain and leave the room and not participate. But without the conflict of interest or the other language, any abstention language, you can still on the first reading, still stay in the room, still participate, still ask questions, still do everything you want to do. But when a roll call vote takes place, if you don't feel like you're ready to vote yes or no at that time, we will, this language gives you the option to just say, "I pass" on first reading. Of course, on second reading, you're going to have to vote. But on first reading, you can pass.
What is the difference, I guess, between that and what we have now? Let's say she calls the roll.
Under current language, you have to vote. You have to vote yes or no on first reading under current language.
We're talking about first reading.
Yes, first reading only.
Well, I couldn't use the word "pass."
Currently, no, sir.
I pass.
Let me just, let me work one more comment in. The staff, we have no position on this. We can go either way. We can go whichever way you all want to go. We're trying to just give you guys some options to discuss and go from there, so.
Well, one thing for sure, I am not, and I will not be supportive of any work sessions like we've had in the past. From my standpoint, let's go from there. It would appear to me that the last one, the change and pass option is the better of the three, in my opinion. Been wrong once or twice. But technically, when you look at one, we're staying as it is. And number two, we will not vote in the present, or the change presentation is that on the vote, we can offer a pass to the next meeting. Number three.
Make sure I understand. I kind of got confused there. You're recommending that we, the only change would be on the first vote, a person would have the option of not voting yes or no, they just vote pass and move on, be the only change? Okay, that's, I understood.
And option three, right now, would have that you would still call the roll. You would still call the roll every time, and it would just be, a yes, no, or pass would be the three options.
The option two was to not call the roll. You would hope Ashley would read the item. You all could discuss it, ask questions to the staff, but there would be no vote. You would, once the discussion was done, you'd just move on to the next item, and you'd take it up with a second reading next meeting.
Right. The whole intent, my intent, anyway, behind this was to both create the opportunity for citizens to participate in the discussion of whatever the item is. Create the opportunity for them to do so, and also to hopefully reduce the perception amongst some in the community that minds are made up before the meeting starts, or that meetings are held behind closed doors, and that we come in on first reading and everybody knows where we stand. The proposal that was, that was put forward at the last meeting, to me, is a, is an excellent way to achieve both of, both creating the opportunity and reducing the appearance, but it doesn't have to be the only way. There's usually more than one way to get to where it is that we want to go. As I think through the options, what I want to make sure is that what we don't lose sight of is that the change, the proposed change was not made in order to accommodate the commission in any way. The proposed change was to accommodate the public, to give the public more opportunity to both hear what the commission was considering, weigh in on what the commission was considering. And it wasn't about whether or not the commission needed more time, should be allotted more time, although that happens. I can think of a couple different votes that I've taken at times where, when Katie was the city clerk and I asked for more time and was told then that our ordinances didn't allow it, and I had to take a position on that particular night, even though I didn't feel prepared to do so. But this initiative was really about trying to ensure that the public has ample amount of time to be able to hear it. Since this discussion has started, not beforehand, because I had a lot of feedback beforehand, but since this discussion has started, overwhelmingly, I have heard from people that they want it to remain as it is now or similar. And when I say overwhelming, I mean three. I've heard from three people since this discussion started, and all three have asked that it remain as it is or a modification of as it is with a pass involved in some way. Now, prior to, I've, for the years that I've served on the commission, heard over and over again, when it's an item of importance to the individual that I'm talking to, I don't like how you vote on the first reading of it. It looks like what I have to say doesn't matter. I've not heard from any of those people since this discussion has started, and that may be because they feel like they've already spoken to me about it. Sir?
Based on what you're saying, though, the individuals still had an opportunity to have a voice before the second reading, did they not?
They have always had the opportunity. It was about whether or not they believed they had the opportunity, and whether or not they felt like their voice was going to be heard if the commission had already taken a vote. Like if Commissioner Denning had already made a decision on the first reading, was it worth my time and effort to contact him if I disagreed with what he had to say? Or since he already took the vote, was he more likely to stay with his vote? So a lot of it is about, and I realize...
But one could change.
Absolutely.
On the second reading.
And it's happened on occasion.
Yeah, it's happened on occasion.
It has happened on occasion, where members of the commission have changed from a first vote to a second vote. So it really is about, you know, Judge Margaret Huddleston, who I worked for, used to tell me all the time, perception is often the reality. And so it is somewhat about the public perception as to whether or not people feel like they can participate in the political process. And that's all, all I'm interested in related to this ordinance. Whether we, whether we stay as we are, whether we move to two, whether we move to three, I think all, all of them have value, and can, and I can support any of them, as long as what we're willing to say is that if we go through time and we find that we're getting the same feedback, that we look and evaluate it again as determined, whatever we decide tonight or at the next meeting, if it moves on to another meeting and is voted on, that it's up for review by the commission at a future date, whoever makes up that commission.
Could it be said at every meeting, as an example, we stay where we are? We keep present status? Could it be said at every meeting by the mayor or by any of us, but preferably by the mayor, that there will be two votes on this particular issue? And the second vote is the one that counts? Could that be said, and thus still use the present writings?
I'm trying to remember that you might have touched me over in it.
Can I ask a question?
Can I ask one follow-up question? Could that be part of the city clerk's role at the end of each roll call when it's a first reading? And I don't mean to put more on either one of them when they're doing it, but if, if it's on a piece of paper that flows as it turns, and the next, you know, the next item is...
I don't think she's got it written down. She's got a chart with yes or no on...
Could we, could it be a part of the agenda? We have an ordinance, there would be two readings, and even put the date of when the second reading is going to be? That way, everybody knows.
That'd be the thing. Second reading when it's scheduled for, such and such.
Put that in the header of the first reading? We, a lot of times where we used to put first readings toward the beginning of the, of the agenda, and second readings toward the end of the agenda, we don't, we can always work that out, but we try. But I think that might be a possible solution, if we put that in the header, that...
First reading?
As a, what do you call it?
Disclaimer?
Disclaimer, thank you.
I do infer that a first reading when I, when I call it off, but, you know...
Agenda usually identifies if it's a first reading or a second reading right after the ordinance number. But that is probably something we could add when we put the filed date in parentheses right after the title, then we could probably put on there at the same time, that second reading is tentatively scheduled for such date, because depending on your discussion at first reading, it could get tabled, it could be postponed. So, but we could have some tentative language added to that, and I hate to speak for the clerk's office, but having some experience in that area, that is something that's easy to add to the agenda and can become standard.
And would the language be that that's the tentative date, and the second vote is the binding vote?
We could do that.
Commissioner Paragon, I'll cut you off.
Cut me off? That's fine. In my, this is, this is on the side, but I am going to ask a question. Five-plus years as a, as a commissioner, I've not really had anybody say, you know, well, you've already made up your mind, or I didn't have an opportunity. I have not had that. I think the Daily News poll kind of shows what little interest that there really is in this particular topic. It's not a scientific poll, I know, but we had hardly anybody that bothered to go on and say anything about it, because it's, I really honestly, in my heart of hearts, don't believe that, that the people that care about an agenda item or are not going to dig in and do a little bit of work on their own. You know, how does this, how does this work? The one area of our responsibility that I have had people that get very, very passionate and very, very vocal and are certainly, you know, have a right to, is in zoning issues. So I want to understand completely how this does not affect how we go about working with planning and zoning and their recommendations as they flow to us. So I might defer to Jean on that. But I want people to understand that that is a different quasi-judicial body that makes recommendations that flow to us.
Under the current policy, you're right, any rezoning goes to Planning Commission first. They hold a public hearing. The Planning Commission advertises it, but I think they post on a property, they notify, I forgot the exact word, adjacent property owners or somewhere those in the range. They do advertise a hearing, they hold a public hearing, they make recommendations to the city commission. Always, as before, the city, this body has the ability to accept or reject those recommendations, and we won't talk about the procedure about how to do that. But again, those are a matter of ongoing concerns that is an ordinance requirement to approve rezonings. So as I always like all the other ordinances, there will have to be two readings. Whatever you change here, that will be, you know, the same thing, whether you want everybody to vote, no vote, or the pass language will be the same for the zoning, just like everything else. But this will not impact or change in any way, shape, or form how rezonings are held before the Planning Commission.
I just want to make that clear to the public, because that's, that's, that's most of the hot-button issues that the community, there's neighborhoods, want to get involved in, and they need to. They need to. I, I think we are all elected as representatives of the folks that voted for us, so we were, we were affirmed, it's called election, that we are, you know, trusted and sent here to make decisions based on what's best for the community. And as we make decisions that are contrary to what people think are best, are best for our community, I think that's, that's called elections. And, and I've really done a lot of thinking on this, and I think that's probably why, because I've wondered... this, and I think that's probably why, because I've wondered, why does a city commissioner only have a two-year term? That seems so short, and it is short, it's a flash in the pan, and it comes by so fast. Well, I, I think by, by design, that's probably a really good thing, because, because, you know, we, we make decisions. We're, we're boots on the ground here, and, and I think people send us here to, to work on their behalf, and, and I think that's, that's an, it's an awesome responsibility and honor to be here to serve, and, you know, folks let you know when you didn't maybe get it right. I, I've, I've seen that, and, and I appreciate that, and we want to get it right, but there are certain issues out that we have to deal with that require input from the community and require work sessions, but not all of them. I think most people probably put a lot of trust in us to do the day-to-day work and, and do the right thing. So, that's, that's all I have to say. If, if I'm supposed to weigh in, I think option number three is great. If, if you don't feel like you've had time, or you don't feel like you have all the answers, or you don't feel like you've heard enough from the community, what was it called? Pass. You know, yeah, pass. So, you know, and that gives, that gives you whatever, you know, whatever need you have for the next few weeks. So, I like that option, but I, I personally like to vote on the first reading, and I probably will, just because I like to have people know how I feel about something. And yes, we've changed our minds. I think reverse parking is a perfect example of how we thought one thing-
Wow.
I didn't bring it up this time.
Just saying. How we thought one thing was going to be great, and we heard from the community, and what did we do? We changed it.
We reversed.
And that's, you know, we did. We reversed, reversed, but that, that's, that's the power of all of this that we do, and, and allowing the community to really, to really understand where we stand on something. So, thank you.
First, I just want to thank the staff for putting your heads together to try and figure out a solution that would work for everybody. For me, I mean, this whole thing, why I think it's an important topic for us to talk about is because I do think that it's important for our citizens to actually have an opportunity to give input and be a part of our decision-making, and that that perception is there, that they have that opportunity. So, for me, I think the, I guess, removing the requirement to vote, I don't think it gets us to that place where we're creating that space. But for me, that was what I was hoping to get, was more space for the community to learn about the topic we're going to talk about, and for us to have conversations with the public. And for me, that doesn't create any more space for the public to participate and learn more about a topic before we vote. And I think if we are going to vote, we should all be compelled to vote, to give the citizens an idea of where we stand. I, if this is where we're going to do it, vote on both, I think we should all vote on both, because I wouldn't want to give someone an out if they felt like their vote was going to be unpopular, to not tell anyone until it was too late. So, I, I feel like there is an important role for compelling us to vote on the first reading, if we're going to vote. If we're going to vote, we should all vote. So, that's my feelings on number three. I think it, I do like the transparency part of compelling us to vote and say where we stand before it counts. So, I would not want to remove that if we're going to keep voting, because I don't think it makes it less, removes the confusion about it not counting as a vote, in our non-binding vote. I do like number one, and this maybe is a, shouldn't be related in terms of talking about how we're solving this, but I do think instead of having two retreats where we're kind of holed away in a boardroom, and we're talking about all these topics, and we really run out of time to talk about it, I would love to see us have more of those topics sprinkled throughout our calendar throughout the year, and in this more public space where people can learn with us as we go along about the different things that our city and our different departments are thinking about putting forward. So, for me, I would prefer we take some of our retreat topics and try to have them throughout the year so that we can learn about it with more time, and, and our, the public can be present with us as we learn about it. So, my preference would be number one, that we keep it exactly the way it is, compel all of us to vote twice, and instead of consolidating all of our work session topics to twice a year, try to, to maybe spread it out and have it more during our meetings.
Do you have a problem with the wording being put on the agenda? As we mentioned earlier, that there would be a second reading on certain, certain date?
Yeah, I, that's, my biggest goal is to clarify for folks that the first vote is non-binding, so whatever we can do to help communicate that. So, if we can do first reading, roll call vote, non-binding, I mean, be very clear as possible in our agenda that this vote, I think, we, I, the first vote has to explain that, in my opinion. I'd, I'd like us to use some clarifying language in the first reading, and I also like what you all talked about for the binding vote on the second reading will be held tentatively in the future. But I think anything we can do to help clarify it would be great.
Number one, do you mean?
Rarely.
Thank you very much.
So-
Change your mind, Jean.
He went from three to one.
Well, one is, I think, great. I, I had no problem with number three, but as long as we stayed in the same place with just some wording on the agenda and-
Well, but more work sessions. More work sessions is, is, I think, am I wrong, Dana? You're wanting to have more work sessions throughout the year? Is that, did I not hear that?
Instead of, well, for me, it's instead of having the retreats crammed, and then we run out of time to talk about everything, so to me, it's the same amount of our time, but we're just having it during the, the year, instead of having it all in one day at our retreats.
Right now, we're having two retreats a year. They run somewhere between eight and five hours each time. Dana's suggesting less retreats, I'm sorry, Commissioner Beasley-Brown is suggesting less retreats, but taking that same amount of block of time and spreading it throughout the year on work sessions. Which really, this doesn't affect that one way or the other in the grand scheme of things, because any member of the commission can ask for an item to be put on the work session at any time, and it can be put on there. So, I don't know that, that rolling work sessions into whether or not we're going to vote on a first reading or a second reading has much bearing. It's important to the discussion, but even if you support one, or if you decided to support three because one included work sessions, that doesn't mean that there won't be work sessions.
Nor does it mean there will be work sessions.
That's correct. That's correct.
I would, I would propose, as Commissioner Nash said, to kind of set your work session topic aside, and let's focus on the, the vote, or no vote on the first reading, and, and I'm going to rely on you all to give me topics for work sessions throughout the year, and, and if I have one that I think's going to be a, a hot topic that we need to discuss ahead of time, much, or anything I get ahead of time, I'm going to send to you via email and, and work it that way, but I'm going to need some help knowing what you want to talk about on work sessions. So, what I think is mundane and ordinary, and we've done it a dozen times throughout the years, may not be mundane to some of you all, or a new commissioner coming in, so I'm going to need some direction and help with, with, with that, so, with the request.
May I, just to see if we agree on the same language, if we stick with keeping it the same, but having some description language added to our agenda? So, I would love it if we could add some descriptive language like roll call vote, non-binding, or non-binding roll call vote for the first reading. And then, what was the proposed language for the second reading?
Tentative date pertaining to when the second reading is going to be?
Yeah. It would all appear with only first readings, so, so we could have potentially, in that parentheses where it has the filed date listed right after that, we could indicate a non-binding roll call vote will be taken, a second reading is tentatively scheduled for whatever date that happens to be, in and about kind of that language. We might try to find a way to shorten it, Hope.
Maybe I can get with Ashley, and maybe we could get some examples of different things that maybe we could do, and have you all look over them, if that would work.
I, I still like number three. I, I still like number three on, on this list, just because, you know, there has been some, some items that maybe did need a little more, you know, but, but, but we're, we're still giving a vote. Not, not that I have any intention in all of passing, but, you know, it's, I, I guess when I, when we first started, and we had a first vote that wasn't a binding vote, I didn't quite understand the abstention piece, you know, and I didn't realize that it had to be like a conflict of interest. I just thought maybe it was, you know, something you could say, nah, but, but either way, I'm good either way. Either way.
So, Hope, as I understand it, then what you're going to do is you're going to come up with language that would, if, if we take an ordinance from tonight, and it would be number six, it'd be the ordinance rescinding interlocal, no, can't be, yep.
Be number seven. Look at number seven.
Ordinance approving amendment number two of the City of Bullingdale, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020, and then there would be a period, and then you're looking for language that would follow in there, that would say, first vote is a non-binding vote, and then on the agenda, over by where it, it, it has ordinance, the ordinance number, instead of it saying second reading, it would say first reading with a tentative binding vote on and a date.
Okay, you're wanting that on the agenda, right, correct?
On the summary, on the-
I'd like to, my preference would be that there is a statement in the summary that, that the clerk reads off-
Okay.
-that indicates to the public whether or not there is a binding vote or a non-binding vote being taken.
Okay, yeah.
And the other writing is going to be up in the far left?
Over here, where it will say, if it's a first reading, it would say that, that the binding vote is tentatively set for this date.
So, we, is it number one all over again, other than just a few words?
That's correct.
Let's go.
That's where I'm at.
And just to, if we're on the topic of making it clear, for the municipal orders, if we could just say, one, this is the final vote, or there's only one vote?
I'd rather not do that on every municipal order, because that's basically all we do. Ordinances are the special items that, that have the two votes that would confuse people.
Well, I was just thinking in our agenda, not in the reading out part, but you know how you have first reading, second reading, so just in the kind of the description over to the side, but-
Is it possible to just put on municipal orders directly underneath it on the agenda? One, one reading, one vote? Or final, or final vote?
Yeah.
So, that when people come to the meeting, pick up the agenda, review the agenda online, it, it does take a shot at educating them on the process, more so.
We can definitely look into it, for sure.
Would you be open to that? But not, it's really, instead of reading it-
I'm going to read that out loud to everybody.
Right. Are you open to that?
Sure.
Where would that show up, Commissioner?
If you look at number one on our agenda right now, under municipal order number 2020-18, it would just, right there underneath that, in parentheses, say final vote.
And on the second reading?
Yeah.
Or could you make it even a little bit more simpler, like under items for consideration, just put something to effect, all municipal orders just require one vote?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Is that, would that be okay? That would be a lot simpler.
Yeah, I think so.
Got that, Hope.
So, we're not making any changes to the ordinance with regard to how we operate, but I still, we, we got some cleanup language that Jean had in there that we need to bring off the table, so, so I'll need to move to bring off the table ordinance 2020 number three, and then I'll amend it to remove that part of it, that the, the table ordinance had some language with regard to filing. That's correct? Is that not correct? Okay, I need a second to bring it off the table.
Second.
Okay, motion by me, second by Denning, to bring it off the table. Please call the roll.
Denning?
No.
What are we voting here?
We're bringing it off the table.
Just bringing it off the table, so we can kill it.
Correction, yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, and we're not going to kill it, because Jean has given us some language-
That's great.
-that we have to put in the ordinance.
That's great, you're right.
That I'm going to make a, a motion to amend what you've presented here to us, to delete the change in-
Strike, strike that line on page three.
Oh, no pass? We have, we were going to go with a no pass.
That, that no vote is required on the first reading of any ordinance other than emergency ordinance, and that's what we're deleting, is that correct?
Not going to.
So, we're voting on the amendment?
Do you need to do that, or just pass this ordinance down? Just vote it down.
Well, you've got to have this language that you changed in the first part, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right about the day and deadline. I'm sorry, we had the other part, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, you are.
Combine the two issues together.
Move, combine the two, yes.
Yeah.
So, I made a motion to delete any change in the method of, or of voting, but keeping the language that Jean said, that we need to clean it up and match with state law on the first two pages, and I'll need a second.
Second.
So, just to clarify, so that language shall now read, "When debate is concluded, the presiding officer shall call for a roll call vote." Period.
Yes, and what we're keeping is the language on page two, that changes the language that we are now pursuing to statutory time frame for filing of candidacy.
There are some plurals and some capitals that you're changing as well, that we're keeping, just as cleanup language. Is everybody clear what we're doing? We're going to vote now to add the amendment, which deletes this language, and I think everybody was on board with what we're doing, so please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now, we need to vote-
First reading.
As amended.
First reading.
As a first reading.
Yes.
And you got to vote.
Yes.
You can't pass. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
I can't pass.
You can't pass on this one. Unless you have to go to the bathroom or something.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
That was the, yes, come on. And the bad, yes, but the bad part is, is we ain't done with this thing, we're going to do it one more time, right?
Right, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Reading shall be on March 3, 2020.
And binding.
And binding.
Unless you choose to amend it, then we got to start over again. All right, our next scheduled meeting is March 3, 2020. Thank you for tuning in.